Final agenda. There's a motion to approve the final agenda.
Move to approve the final agenda?
I second that.
Moving, seconded. Any objections? See, and then motion passes. But on to item five, this one ceremonial, this will be a proclamation honoring Sharice Deschens. This is again honoring Sharice Deschens for dedicated service to the city of Squim. And whereas Sharice Deschens has served, the city of Squim through a transfer motive, motive, and sometimes time. Decade, taken on many roles over the years, including senior planner, assistant to the city manager, assistant city manager, interim city manager, and deputy city manager slash community and economic development director. And whereas as a key player on the city's senior management team, Sharice was always ready to cover leadership gaps, sometimes on short notice. And whereas in addition to her duties and responsibilities in the community development department, Sharice worked tirelessly on community oriented projects such as Squim Service Fest, Rally in the Alley, and The People's Project. And whereas Sharice was integral to the formation and work of the Squim Health and Housing Collaborative and the city's in-house facilitation team, Greece. And whereas Sharice has served as liaison to the Squim Arts Commission, the Parks Arbor and Recreation Board, and the Planning Commission. And whereas in 2019, Sharice earned Assistant City Manager of the Year for towns under 10,000 and graduated in the first class of the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. And whereas throughout her service with the city of Squim, Sharice has earned the respect and admiration of community leaders and appointed and elected officials across the Olympic Peninsula. And whereas the staff and officials of the city of Squim will miss her energy and contributions and wish her the best future, even through her, even though her path is leading her away from us. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Squim, Washington, is hereby honor Sharice Deschens and express gratitude for her 10 years of service to the city of Squim, proclaimed and presented by the mayor of Squim on this 15th day of April, 2024.
Well, thank you. It's been a really long 10 years and it's been a short 10 years all at the same time. I really thank you all for the honor of like cutting my teeth here in Squim. I've had a lot of opportunities for growth and development, a lot of opportunity to cover in many areas, and I really appreciate that, that being offered to me as a career built, as I built my career here. And I'm sorry, I'm getting a little choked up. But I know you guys are all like here to do what well for your community. And I really appreciate that you all serve and those that are appointed as well give a lot back. Just want to encourage you all to stay connected regionally, statewide, and nationally in the work that you do as in local government. Please get involved in AWC, connect with your peers, get involved in the community and organizations as you can. And I like to think of it like what we give back. And the more that we have on our shoulders as individuals in leadership, the less ego that's involved. And you really have a responsibility to those you serve in the community to do the best you can. So I hope that my time here has been well received and I really appreciate this honor. And take care. Good luck. I'll be around for a while, but thank you. I appreciate you.
Maybe we can get a picture. Yeah, that'd be great. And then if you'll allow me, Mayor, I'd love to just thank Sharice publicly as well from the city manager and the senior management team for all of your service. It's been amazing last two years. Sorry, I guess we're taking pictures here.
Thank you, Sharice. I'm there. I'm here virtually, but yes, thank you so much.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, absolutely. Without tearing up, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just so grateful for your service. You have committed so much time and effort and there's no replacement for you. And I'll miss you so much. You were always willing to answer questions and you were just always so helpful when I needed to understand anything. And so I'm just so appreciative of that. And I know you're probably thinking, because all of senior management team does it. They say, well, it takes a village. Yes, it does. But you are a key component in that, and you have been for so long. So thank you so much.
I don't know if you guys heard my comments before. I'm happy to say them again, but as you were trying to get those pictures. So obviously, this is a huge hole for the city. We're eager to see Sharice move forward in her career path, and thank you for your service. It's been wonderful serving with you and the value you've brought to wherever you've served. So I just always like looking forward and wishing you well and will be keeping in touch and putting great thoughts into the universe for your success going forward. And just want to thank you for your service and dedication.
Any other comments?
Sharice, I just want to thank you for like when I came into office and didn't really know much about anything. You took me under your wing and spent a lot of time in your office, you know, kind of showing me the ropes. I think I was born between a doubleheader and my dad made it to the second game. So I always think of things in terms of baseball. And I think someone like you who's a complete utility player that anywhere you're needed, you go and you help out. It's been, you know, very important for the city and I just wish you the best in your career path and just hope to see you and stay connected. Thank you.
Sharice, I really appreciate you are the definition of team player. You have done everything that has been asked of you. I never hear you complain. I never hear you criticize. You've always, when you correct us or educate us, you're very, very professional about it. And I really admire the way that you're a team player and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Sharice. Okay, we'll move on to item six, the council interviews.
All right, our first interviewee is Nicole Hartman.
I brought some notes and I want to be respectful of your time, so I'm just going to keep this. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, one quick question before we start. Since Harmony is virtual, did you want her to ask a question also maybe first or?
That's fine if she wants, if she's.
Whatever, whatever she's willing to. Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Harmony?
Hello, sure, I can ask the first question. Let me grab that piece of paper right here. Thank you so much.
Nicole, we're going to ask 10 questions, three minutes each.
Thank you so much. I have them right here. Question number one. Thank you so much, Nicole. Question number one is, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
Well, my vision for this is for all residents to feel engaged in their community and feel welcome, to manage growth so that community needs are met while still retaining the reason that people came here to begin with. And I'd implement this personally by asking good questions so we mitigate the chances of unintended consequences of actions. And I trust that staff are the subject matter experts. You know, the role of councilor is to be governing at a 30,000 foot level. And I would also look to other successful communities and what they've done creatively. I'm a big fan of the municipal services research center and I look to that for guidance frequently.
Thank you, Nicole. I also share being a big fan of the MRSE. Who's going to take the next question?
I think, I think Brandon will, but I think he's trying to figure something out right now.
I think we're going to set the clock at 30 minutes like we did last times. That way.
And Nicole, just so you know too, a lot of us are writing down answers. So if we're not looking at you, it's because we're, yeah.
No problem. This is unusual because I'm seeing this from the exact opposite side, having just went through the process to appoint a new commissioner for the PUD as well.
Okay. Okay. Are there any issue areas that you are particularly passionate about?
Yes, I'm sure this has been said numerous times, but affordable housing, water resource adequacy, emergency preparedness, and mental health resources.
Thanks. Thanks, Nicole. Dan Butler. How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, and welcome opposing viewpoints and open dialogue?
Well, I can provide guidance if I feel like it's an area through my experiences that I have some strengths. But first, you seek to listen and then be open to having your mind change. Because opposing viewpoints can come up with some really amazing out of the box thinking. And then making sure, I know this is a communications thing, but making sure that everybody has the right to speak at least once before moving on to somebody having a second voice so that everybody is included because you have mixes of introverts and extroverts.
Nicole, what legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? How would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
Well, I'm currently a public employee in a government relations position. And while we have to be careful under the PDC rules about lobbying, we work with our trade association to come to consensus as 28 PUDs, to come to consensus on legislative issues and create the talking points. We go to Olympia, we participate in Recognition Day, Day on the Hill. And we form relationships not only with the legislators themselves, but their legislative assistants. Because often they're the ones who are really aware of what the legislators need from us to make it easy on them to get the message.
Given everyone a chance to finish writing. Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relevant to this position and why you're interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Well, I've lived in the greater Squim area since 2008. I moved down from Alaska. But I was not in the city limits. And so now I've been in the city limits since March of 2020. But I was renting and looking for my forever home and I wasn't sure where that was going to end up being. So I just purchased a house within this past month. And I'm in the city limits and I intend to retire here. So I feel like now I'm in a good position to be able to give back and contribute to the community. Since I, this is a long range thing for me. I plan to, this is my final move. My past 20 years of work experience has been in the not-for-profit arena first with a credit union. And then when I came down here, there weren't any credit unions headquartered here that had that type of position. So I was looking in the paper and saw a position with the PUD and I was like, what is this? Found out that they're basically the utility version of a credit union. I really like the service aspect of having something that's guided by the customers. They elect their officials for governance. That's service. They're not there to generate income for shareholders. So that was intentional and I believe in the benefits of that governance through the elected officials. I'm also a Coast Guard military brat. And so I've lived in many places growing up, which has given me exposure to a variety of different types of cultures and communities. And then when I served as the executive assistant for several years at the PUD as a start, as you know, when you, when we used to have weekly meetings, you get to learn a little bit about a lot. And I really familiarized myself with the whole understanding of the nature of what it means to serve in that capacity. And I studied and created an index of resolutions so I could study the whole history since 1940 and be able to understand and help guide. So that's, you know, and my interest also is that I don't believe that as a resident, you can complain about anything if you're not willing to, you know, put some effort and have a little skin in the game.
All right, Nicole. So based on what you know about this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
I think the ability to be open to change, transparent, ethical, somewhat of a thick skin because you're not going to make everybody happy. But you have to at least earn the trust so that if somebody disagrees, they can at least hopefully respect your decision-making process. And also recognizing that you're governing at the 30,000 foot level. The staff are the subject matter experts and they're coming here to make their recommendations. And I think the role of council member in asking questions and helping, where sometimes you're so thick in the weeds that the questions that you ask are helping to potentially avoid unforeseeable problems. But yeah, I think it's just, you need to be able to agree to disagree and do what's right. You want to do what's going to make folks. Do you, would you rather be happier? Would you rather be right? And I believe in consensus building.
Thank you so much, Nicole. I have question number seven right here in front of me. So question number seven is, strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
Long time ago, when I was working at the credit union, we had a motivational speaker come in. And he was surprised when a couple of years ago I reached out to him because he couldn't believe I'd retained it for so long. But he talked about a concept of open mode of communication. And that's where instead of saying, I need this by this deadline, or you make a suggestion to somebody, you demand information, you do something, and they're questioning why you're asking under, they're getting irritated. When you use open mode of communication, they're like, I need this urgently because if I don't get this urgently, then X, Y, and Z is going to happen. And then they understand your intent and why you might feel rushed or why you might sound harried rather than having them just go, geez, you know, I can't believe this attitude. The open mode of creation, I've been practicing that this entire time. And I think that you're asked so that they know that you're building that transparency and trust and there's no question of motive or intent. I also think it's important to be vulnerable, not let ego get in the way. I've had experiences on boards where they started off the year with an exercise in sharing things that maybe you were embarrassed about, making you feel vulnerable as a method of establishing trust. That also was very powerful. But it does have to be earned. So I can't say that I've had like an aha moment to provide a single example, but the feedback that I'm receiving from peers over time, both verbally and through actions, is I'm getting invited to serve in leadership positions on committees. I'm invited to various things over the years. And my input is received well. And I believe that it's those ongoing invitations that tell me I'm doing something right.
What issues is our city facing now?
Certainly, again, the housing shortage. We also have schools needing more resources, water availability, and managed growth. I did read your review, the comprehensive plan as well. When I moved into the city limits, so I could kind of understand the neighborhoods and helped guide my decision of where I ended up buying a home as well.
Thank you. I appreciate your succinctness. How do you ensure that your decisions align with our organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals? And my guess is that that is meant to be with your organizational goals rather than our organizational goals. But I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure how to, because I'm not staff or elected official here.
Exactly.
It's hard to come up with that. But what I, what I'd written for my notes is that in reading the comprehensive plan and observing the city actions, more so since moving into the city limits, I feel it's my responsibility as a resident to be responsive to things like the city surveys. I think those have been wonderful. And the public process in order to share my opinions. As I said, also, we can't complain if we're not engaged with the process. I believe the city has wonderful staff based on my interactions with different departments. And that the whole purpose of having a council of multiple individuals is to invite that healthy debate and arrive at consensus so that you earn the public's trust, even if they don't always necessarily agree 100%. Also, I have a kind of a nerdy passion for the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. And so that helps kind of guide my decision-making as well.
Nicole, do you have any questions for us?
The one thing I'm curious about is, I know that anytime there's a change in an organization's governing body, it can create some apprehension and on the part of staff. So I'm curious if any of you can share maybe what you experienced or just something retrospectively that should I be appointed would help make that transition successful.
I think you've already mentioned being respectful and I think that would, our staff seems very open to suggestions. They also are very helpful. I find them to be helpful. And if they were apprehensive, when I started, I did not pick up on that. Thank you.
I was going to say, I'm newly elected to this position and the onboarding process was really helpful. So each department put together a presentation. And then we spent time touring facilities in the city and being introduced to not only department directors, but their staff. It was, it was a really well-done thoughtful onboarding process that exceeded my expectations.
Yeah, I'll second that. The onboarding process, I think you get to ask a lot of questions and staff, I think, gets to know you a little bit through that and helps really open those channels. And it's been really nice knowing that there is no stupid question. Like they've never made me feel dumb for asking something, which is really nice. So yeah, just asking questions and the whole process has been interesting becoming an elected official. And I feel like it takes a couple of years to feel like you're good at your job. I'm still trying to feel like I'm good at my job. But yeah, staff make it a lot easier knowing that I can ask them anything.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for me? I speak fast, so I've had a feeling this would go by quickly. Okay, thank you.
Do you want a couple minutes or move on? Okay, so they're not here at the moment.
Or any of the next candidates here?
Could I motion that we go on recess until 4:30?
We'll be at recess until 4:30.
All right, our next candidate is Jean Janis. If you want to go to the table there in the middle. Ms. Janis, in front of you is the microphone, so you want to make sure that you speak into it clearly for the record. Thank you.
Is it on too? There's a green light if it's on. Okay.
Welcome. If you weren't here for the other ones, we're going to go around the dais and ask you a series of questions. So Counselor Rutter, if you want to kick us off again.
That would be great. Thank you, Brandon. Good afternoon, Jean. Now, question number one, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
Well, I was living in the county, so my application said I was only here for 14 months. But since I now live in the city, I would like to see what's going on and help wherever I can.
Okay, thank you. Are there any areas that you are particularly passionate about?
Well, I was president of the Squim Dungeness Hospital Guild for 11 years, and I'm proud to say that we donated over $3 million to various charities in the city. I have a captain's license and I've donated several two-hour tours to four different charities in the city. And for 10 years, I just retired from being a U.S. Coast Guard auxiliary on my own boat doing safety patrols. I've been on the board as a trustee of the co-op for the past eight years. So I've contributed a lot to the city.
Thank you, Jean. How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, and welcome opposing viewpoints and open dialogue?
Gently, especially because as a newcomer. I'd like to get the job done. Right now, I'm dealing with that little ordeal at Squim and the Lavender Meadows. So I have a tough time just getting in and out of my house. So I'd like a heads up on things like that, so I know what I'm looking for.
Mayor, is it okay to follow up now or do you want to wait till the end?
You can't ask any other questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I was processing your comment about the lavender. Are you talking about the roundabout construction or are you talking about your resident in Lavender Meadows?
Not, not my resident. If I can get in, I'm okay. It's the street work done on Squim Dungeness and the roundabout.
Okay, so that's that construction process. Got you. Thank you.
And I noticed on the way home today, they dug up another six feet of the street. So there's only one lane going north and now only one dead lane going south. You can't have both of them. And they've got these guys directing the traffic that said, go ahead. And if I hadn't looked, I would have got broadbeamed.
Jean, what legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? And how will you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with our legislators?
Being a newbie, I would probably do a lot of listening, taking notes, and make my decisions and make, let them be heard, or my opinions.
Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We're interested in hearing highlights of your experience relevant to this position and why you're interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Well, living in the city, like I said in the prior time, I'd like to know firsthand what's happening with the city and anything I can contribute. We were a great force in getting our Hillipad. We put, donated quite a bit of money to that one from the Hospital Guild. And just keep ahead of it, keep ahead of what's happening.
So based on what you know about this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
I think just patience, listening to what things were done and how they're done, and just learn as I go along.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Jean. Question number seven comes to me. Strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
Being patient, listening to other people's opinions. I teach second graders and I see great kids coming through our Master Gardener program. And some of their answers just totally amaze me. And I feel that I'm contributing to future council people.
What issues is our city facing now?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
What issues is our city facing now?
A lot of the construction work in the city isn't being, in my opinion, done quick enough. But, and if you stop and talk to the men, they have no idea at the end what the date will be when the job is completed, which kind of bothers me. But, and also, three of them will be watching what one person does. So that's costing extra salaries. I'm very conscious of spending other people's money. As I learned in the Hospital Guild, I would bring up suggestions to my board, and then the whole membership was allowed to vote because we gave a lot of money away.
How do you ensure that your decisions align with organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Well, do we get a handbook, first of all? Okay, I will study that and pretty much stay within the limits of the handbook.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. I think most of them have been answered over the telephone. And I understand we have another interview next Monday. And keep my fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Are we done? Thank you. I don't have a resume because I haven't worked since 2000. I enjoy heading the different places in my profession. I was a nurse. I managed one of the busiest offices in Los Angeles, Cedar Sinai Hospital. And I had four doctors that basically jumped when I said something. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to be, again, at recess for probably, say, 10 minutes, and then we'll see if he pops in.
I had a quick question clarification piece, if you all don't mind. Next Monday, could you remind me what is exactly happening next Monday? Because the final comment there from our interviewee left me with a question.
Hey, Harmony. So next Monday, council will go to executive session at 5:00 p.m. to discuss the candidates and evaluate their qualifications and make their decision in the regular session meeting at 6:00 p.m. So there are no interviews next Monday.
Okay, great.
But we are requesting all candidates to be here for the 6 o'clock meeting.
Oh, I see. Great. Thank you for the clarification, Heather. Take care.
Sure. So we had two candidates drop out. Am I understanding that correctly? Am I counting wrong? I'm sorry. I'm not all here today. We have had no candidates drop out.
All right, we're going to continue being at recess until 5 o'clock as we wait for our next candidate. Okay, I'll call us back to order and we'll continue. So, Mr. Stone.
Hello, hello.
Okay. Thank you for coming, sir. So we'll go around the dais and there's one of us online, but we'll take turns asking you some questions. There'll be a timer on the screen for 30 minutes. And Counselor Rutter, if you want to start us off.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Question number one, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
Thank you for the question. Before I start, I'd like to make a brief statement, if that's okay. As you know, my voice is not optimum today. I've been dealing with some health issues over the last seven weeks. But the good news is I've turned a corner and I expect my voice and things to get better, but this is not optimum. That's what makes that clear. So anyhow. So my vision for this role is to participate as fully as possible. I know you're down one council member already, which is not ideal. And I would like to hit the ground running and provide as much insight and perspective as I can. In terms of operationalizing it, like I've already alluded to, I think just getting involved in the activities as any council member here would. Attending all meetings, participating in any committee meetings, you know, whatever, whatever is required. I'd like to do that type of role. So I don't see this as a temporary kick up my feet, sort of sit back and enjoy things kind of role. So I would like to get involved as much as possible. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. I can resonate with the not being in optimal health myself. That is why I'm participating via Zoom. So best wishes to you. I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you for that. I hope so too.
Okay, are there any issues that you are particularly passionate about?
Well, a good plate of pasta sounds really good right now. But you know, I've been in the Squim area a little over four years. When COVID hit, I came out. And I've had a chance to really enjoy this community. And this community has been on my radar screen and has a potential retirement location for many years. So I'm passionate about a lot of things. I would say my top two is, were, would be managing growth. And finding a way to get better and broader medical care out here. Having experienced the medical care personally, I can say we have some very fine doctors. But we are still lacking in certain specialties, as I'm sure everyone in this room is aware. And I would like to figure out some way that we could make this area more attractive to medical people who might overlook us. And I'm also sure the people in this room are very aware of the growth issues. I myself have lived in several areas of the country that have high growth. And I know there's a lot of pain with that. But we need to manage it. You know, that includes traffic facilitation, you know, whatever it is, you know, traffic circles, more right turn lanes. You know, whatever it takes, we need, we need to manage the growth because it is going to come back and haunt us. I spent several years living in the North Bend, Washington area and that area has seen a tremendous amount of growth. I worked in Issaquah for many years. And those cities frankly did not manage growth very well. And now they're just a contested mess. And I would hate for that to happen to this beautiful area. But on the other hand, you have to manage it. You can't pretend it doesn't exist. People will continue to move out here. Either from California or from Seattle or whatever. But we need to do a good job of trying to manage that growth. And I can probably provide you statistics and talk for an hour or so, but I don't think that's probably the point.
Thank you, William. How do you provide guidance and foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints and open up dialogue?
Well, first of all, I hope there's no opposing views, but realistically, you know, I've started on a few boards in my time. I'm currently on the Board of Trustees for OTA, the Olympic Theater Arts. And I'm also on my HOA board as Vice President. So you kind of get used to the ebb and flow of different opinions. I think it's, I think it's within my nature to try to find that middle way. That's, I find that the most useful approach to those type of situations. I've also worked for over 27 years at the corporate office at Costco. So you can probably imagine I've been in plenty of meetings there as well, where we have different viewpoints. What works best for me is first of all, taking sort of an active listening role, trying to understand what the other person is saying. And try to understand where they're, where they're coming from. It's not always easy, especially if you disagree with them. I have found sometimes trying to lower the level of rhetoric in a meeting because sometimes it can get overheated, especially in a political situation. And I've also found if the viewpoints are widely divergent, then maybe having what I call sidebar meetings or private one-on-one meetings. The last thing you want, especially in a public forum like this, is a bunch of angry shouting and hurt feelings and which, again, I understand where the motivation comes from, but it's not usually that productive. So those, those methods have worked for me very well over many, many years. It's not always possible. Sometimes you just need to raise a gavel, as it were, and say, you know, we need to move on. We'll revisit this. We'll sidebar it. Hopefully that doesn't happen too often. But my approach to trying to find the middle way is usually worked very well for me. Does that answer your question? Great.
Hi, William.
Hi, Kathy.
What legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? And how would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with our legislators?
That's a great question. And I'll be honest with you, I don't have a besides some deeply hopeful personal views, I don't have a lot of legislative experience, like I didn't knock on doors, canvass for votes and those types of things. I have supported many candidates over the years for a variety of different things. I think my experience and capabilities are best served by, as I've already explained maybe in a prior question, is trying to bring people together with differing views. And while I don't have direct experience in like canvassing for votes, like I said, or those types of things. At the end of the day, and I believe this very strongly, you know, people are still just people. And I think if you can get people to hear and see the other side for one, and secondly, and more importantly, is understand what they're trying to say. I guess I sound a little bit like a bit of a broken record, but I realize there are some formalities, Counselor, to that process, what you're asking about. So I guess I can't say I have direct political experience, but I have many, many years of business and board experience. I hope that answers your question. Okay, thank you.
Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relevant to this position and why you're interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Okay, how much time do I have? Okay. And as I think I probably overexplained on my application, but and also the newspaper article that came out. Many years of experience, you know, working, I've been working since I was 16 and unfortunately it was a long time ago. I've always been one to be involved, whether it's been at church, school, business. I just like getting involved with people. That sounds a little, I don't know, stereotypical, I guess, but that's been the reality of my, my life and most of my career. Without going too far back to I was born in a law cabin or something like that. I've lived in many different parts of the country, which I think provides me sort of a different perspective. So no, I'm not a Washington native. So I'm surprised myself sometimes. Washington State is the longest I've ever lived in any one state, you know, over 27 years now I'm counting. But I've lived in New York State, I've lived in Arizona, I've lived in California. So I have, like I said, a wide variety of backgrounds, some big cities like San Diego and Phoenix. Smaller college towns like Flagstaff. I was raised in a small town in upstate New York. So that provides, I think, for me a good foundation and a good understanding that there are different places to live. I've always been just enthralled with Squim. I cannot believe the beauty that we have out here, the mountains, the ocean. My parents, when they were alive, used to always argue back and forth, what's better, ocean or mountains? My mother was an ocean person, my dad was a mountain person. And here we have both. You know, the beauty out here is just stunning, just absolutely stunning compared to where I came from, King County, you can probably imagine. So I've always wanted to get involved. And I see sort of a fragile state and I see a lot of opportunities here in Squim. Where the decisions that this body makes today can have an impact five, 10 years. Again, just look at Issaquah or North Bend. And so my desire is to provide as much help or guidance as I can because I've seen mistakes. I've seen what it's like to live in a place like California or Arizona, or, you know, which by the way has, doesn't have any water, but they continue to grow. And so I think these experiences and my, my desire to live in a place like if you're proud of and want to grow in a managed kind of way is, is probably my, my prime, primary motivation for getting involved. As I've already mentioned, I'm already on two boards here in Squim and I've already been here four years. It just, I think it's important to try to do things. It's easy to complain. We all know there's a lot of complaining in the political world right now. But I really truly do want to give back. And again, that sounds a little stereotypical, but I really do. And again, it's, it's part of my nature to want to come back and help and help the city grow to the beautiful area that still is and hopefully will be in about 10, 15, 20 years. So. Did that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hi, Mr. Stone. Based on what you know about this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
Well, I think first of all, the ability to listen would be helpful. That's a skill sometimes hard to find or hard to find. Personally, I have a sort of a technological background. I've been in the IT industry probably over 40 years now in one form or another. And so I think that skill will serve me well because as everyone here knows, technology is moving right along with us. Whether we go or not, I mean, so. At the end of the day, you know, I could sit here and tell you I had an MBA from Harvard or, you know, 40 years in computer world or, you know, whatever. And those skills are important. Don't, don't get me wrong. But I keep coming back to, and your questions seem to reflect that, this ability to communicate. One of the things that I have picked up as a hobby over many years, I'm also involved in community theater. Doesn't sound like it today, but I've been very involved with DOTA Theater. I don't know if you haven't caught any of our shows. But I've been on stage a couple of times. I've directed or co-directed a couple of shows, you know, I've worked backstage. Just a hobby of mine that I really enjoy. But it's really about communication. And I think, you know, getting up in front of an audience and then having a different character, whatever. But you're communicating another individual. And again, I can't help but notice that most of the questions seem to go back about communicating with our fellow citizens. I have a lot of strong views on various things. But at the end of the day, I think a councilperson needs to be able to communicate. They need to be able to hear what's, what the public is asking of them or demanding. And the council member needs to be effective in communicating back what the council and the city of Squim can do. I realize the city of Squim and North Bend was like this, by the way. I technically lived outside the city limits of North Bend, so I couldn't vote for anything, but I was still very much involved. You know, I still go to council meetings and whatnot. So I would imagine you probably have a lot of people coming here that technically can't vote, but that doesn't mean that their viewpoints and their opinions don't matter because they still pay taxes and all that good stuff. So if I'm answering your question correctly or reanswering, I, I think the skills needed are first and foremost is ability to communicate. I think in my particular situation with the technological background and working for a large corporation like Costco has probably helped me in a lot of different ways. Before that, I worked for some companies, obviously, for many, many years in California and Arizona. But I don't know, I keep coming back to the same thing, so I apologize. But yeah, I think at the end of the day, I think a councilperson has to be able to listen well and communicate well. And be flexible to change because we all know that change is inevitable, whether we like it or not. You know, we have Zoom meetings now, for example, you know, four years ago, you probably wouldn't even thought that possible. So yes, being flexible. But at the same time, and I'm sorry, I'm going to make this point. Sometimes you do have to sort of lay down the law, as it were. I mean, sometimes the city of Squim, you know, we had certain laws in place for a reason. And a lot of times our public doesn't know that. They don't understand it. You know, why can't I park here? Well, these laws were made for a reason. And it's incumbent upon the council sometimes to take the perceived harder road and say, you know, this is just the way it is. We're open to listening. And we understand where you're coming from, but sometimes things are just the way they are. Doesn't mean the laws can't change, as you guys are all aware. guys are all aware. The public votes something, a new set of legislation or whatever, then so be it. But I think it's also incumbent upon the council to be flexible and understanding, but at the same time, be willing to sometimes say the hard truth. So.
Thank you.
Does that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, William. I have question seven here. Question seven is, strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
It would have been so much easier growing up in a padded room, but I guess that's not the case. That's an excellent question. So let me think a minute. I guess I have a couple of experiences to draw up on. One was sort of business-related at Costco. And then some was, another one was a little more personal, when I was president of a nonprofit in Snoqualmie. Let me try the Costco one first, and hopefully this will answer your questions. So I worked, unsurprisingly, in the IT department at Costco for 27 some years and counting. And we've had a variety of different projects over the years, sometimes costing millions and millions of dollars. Anyway, several years ago, I was involved with a project in IT, and I'll try not to get too technical, but anyway, it was to install a new software system for Costco IT. And I found myself disagreeing with the director that was in charge. She was the boss, so I was, I did what I was told. But at the same time, I felt pretty strongly that the approach that she had decided on was maybe not in our best interest. So, you know, I could have just rebelled and said, I'm gonna do it my way, or I could have just done it and not been unhappy with the situation. But I chose a path of trying to communicate my issues with her approach. And it was not easy going to your boss's boss, for example, and saying, you know, I don't think the approach you're taking is the right one. I think she did this first as opposed to that. And there were some heated discussions. Back to my prior point, though, I tried not to do that in a public forum. I didn't think it would do any of us any good to embarrass myself or her in a public forum. At the end of the day, we sort of agreed on a compromise, which I consider a success when you're dealing with a large corporate entity like Costco. Sometimes compromise is a success. And I think the key elements there were were the willingness to meet with this person and speak, speak my mind, as it were, and try to come to some sort of agreement, even though she had a lot of positional power. The other one that's a little more personal, excuse me, the other one is a little more personal. I was a president of a nonprofit in the Snoqualmie area for many years called the Black Dog Arts Coalition. We were a 501(c)(3). And our mission was to bring arts and literature and theater into the Snoqualmie Valley area. Well, as president, sometimes you have to, you know, you wear a different hat. First of all, everyone on the board has a chance to speak. They had different opinions. In this particular case, you're dealing with a lot of very artistic and creative individuals who think differently than my day job in the IT world. And so I had to do a lot of learning to adjust that type of mindset. I don't have a particular incident for you, Harmony, just overall relearning I had to do over the years, just because I had positional power. I couldn't like bang the gavel. It was about understanding where people were coming from and understanding that sometimes I was outvoted, and that's the way it is, right? You know, life moves on. And trying to keep a perspective on that and trying to keep harmony and trying to keep board members from, you know, leaving the board. So it was a very eye-opening experience for me, and I really enjoyed that experience for many, many years. I don't know if that answered the question you think sufficiently. Okay.
Thank you, William. I would go on to Brandon with the next question.
Okay, thank you.
What issues is our city facing right now?
I've done a few notes on my phone, just to make sure I wouldn't forget. I've already mentioned the top two that I thought, managing growth and finding better medical care. My two sons are nowhere near close to being in school age anymore. One is almost 35 and the other one is 32. So, but I think, you know, our schools, as I've heard from younger parents I deal with at the theater or wherever, schools seem to be an issue. But that seems to be an issue everywhere in the state of Washington and nationwide. I don't think we're unique there, but it's still a concern. Mr. Mayor, I could dive down into the traffic situation. You want me to get more specific, but I think, you know, traffic is an offshoot of more and more people moving in, and infrastructure, frankly, hasn't kept up. Anything, everything from maybe needing more right turn lanes to, you know, wider lanes, or I don't know. I mean, there's all sorts of options out there when it comes to managing traffic that cost millions and millions of dollars. So I realize that's going to be a concern. I don't have the statistics in front of me or memorized, but with increased growth comes increased crime. Thankfully, I think most of it tends to be more of the petty type, you know, less violent, but it's still a growing concern. And again, these all offshoot for managing growth. Housing is another concern. Again, this is not unique to Squim. The state of Washington is one, Western Washington, anyway, is one of the most expensive places in the country to live now, and Squim is no exception. Many of our service workers can't afford to live here. They can work here, but they can't live here. And it would be nice to think that we could develop some sort of housing solutions, maybe in partnership with Port Angeles. Again, I see I'm getting close to time here, but there are a lot of specifics with managing growth and traffic that we don't have time to talk about this forum. The other issue I see for Squim for future growth is, you know, is tourism. You know, we live on tourism, besides irrigation festival, which I'm looking forward to. I was actually in a parade last year, so we'll see if I do that again. And Lavender Fest. But, you know, I know a lot, let's just say, we needed more people in our town. But, you know, we do rely on tourism dollars. And it would be nice to, again, in a managed sort of way, manage the tourism industry here or improve it. Am I doing okay for time, or am I out?
I think there's a
Two more questions.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll leave it at that then. Go ahead.
And did you hear, three and a half minutes is what's left. I don't know where the clock went, but so I'll ask the next question, keeping that amount of time in mind. How do you ensure that your decisions align with organization goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision that you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Well, first of all, just to make sure I align, this, of course, goes back to listening and communicating. I think, you know, this council seems pretty capable of making decisions and making it pretty well-known, wider, moving in a certain way. As far as my personal example, I'll try to pull something up very quickly. When I, again, when I was president of that nonprofit, we had certain decisions to make that were financial and creative at the same time, and we needed a decision made quickly. And so my role as president was to sort of move that process along. And again, I dealt with a lot of creative people who like to sort of go off on tangents, but sometimes you have to just sort of move things along, respecting all viewpoints, and then just, you know, call for a vote or, you know, whatever mechanism's in place. Thank you.
Now, William, do you have any questions for us?
Do I get a company car with this job? No, no.
What kind do you want?
I probably do. So I'll try to ask quickly. So as this position develops, assuming that I get chosen, if I decide to stay on, how far in advance would I have to submit for, you know, an actual election? Is there a process there?
Yes. An appointed person must run for office the next scheduled election, which I think there every two years, correct? Because we are a staggered, half of us go off in two years and half of us don't. So.
That is if you like the job.
Does that make sense? We'd have to run for office in two years.
So I'm a little nervous about what Deputy Mayor just said. I don't know. It's a little forbidding. So in this particular cycle, I would not have to run in the fall of 2024, it would be 25.
Odd, they're odd numbered years.
Yeah, okay, good.
Local elections are all odd.
I don't want to compete with Biden and Trump, so that's a good thing. Okay. And I know we're almost out of time, but where the various council members see some of our biggest challenges.
We're pretty committed to housing, addressing housing.
Yeah, I can understand.
Because it affects so many other things.
Yes, I agree. Yep.
And we have the comprehensive plan review coming this summer, so that's going to be that managing growth work that we need to do.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I would also say, just trying to find funding to, along the managing growth lines of, our infrastructure was already lacking, and now we're exploding and with, you know, populations exploding. And so trying to manage the funding and infrastructure and trying to make those all line up, I think, is a big challenge.
Oh, understood. Unfortunately, it's not, it's not a new issue. Thank you. Okay, so you'll make your decision, I suppose, this week, or?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. So I should
Back next Monday, yeah.
So I should attend. What time is the council meeting next Monday?
Six PM.
Six PM. So I should be here for that? Okay, great. Well, thank you again, everybody, for the opportunity, and I apologize again for the five packs a day voice, but that's... The good news is I think I'm getting better. So.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Worthington. Do you need a rundown on how this will work, or?
Pardon?
Do you need a rundown on how this will work, or are you pretty, okay?
I'm ready to shoot from the hip.
All right. Counselor Rutter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Question number one is, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
My vision is finally getting that freight corridor we deserve. We've mixed the freight corridor and the local traffic for years, more than my adult lifetime. And they view us as a park, and we pay the price. We don't get that tourism dollar that we should get. So the number one goal, I guess, as I see it, would be to finally either get that separation from freight traffic and local traffic, however that may be, whether it be reconsidering the proposal to pave over the Bonneville Power Line. Going to disrupt a lot of people, powerful people up there in the foothills, but it was suggested before but never pursued. So I've got to take on the local governments that want to get the retail sales and sales taxes off of the highway. And it's going to be a tough battle. But if we're going to maximize the tourism dollar, that's a battle we've got to fight, and it's a battle we've got to win. We can get that money back. We can grind that money back. If we just get more people out here and get them access during, from May to September, I don't think that we've done a good enough job as a community to do that. And that's the number one, specifically complete streets I see coming in causing problems and going the other way that I'm trying to go. So that would be my first vision.
Thank you. Question two to Brandon.
Are there any areas that you are particularly passionate about?
I'm very opinionated. When I think I'm the victim of bad public policy, I step right out. I don't hesitate. I go right after it. I find people with like minds, and I go after it. I started out transportation and ramp metering, medical marijuana. I just have been in so, I've been to Olympia so many times on so many issues, and I'm not afraid of it. You're not going to be able to get along with everybody, but when you feel you're wrong, you got to step up, got to see who else believes the way you do, and take your, what you think you got to the legislature. And right now, I think in this community, it's the tourism. And I feel strongly that recently, my family came to visit me here, and I could tell they got tired of singing the cow kick nelly in the belly in a barn for four hours while they're waiting for everybody else to come out here too, to plow through all the lights and the traffic. And we suffer from that. And we need, even if it's a seasonal road up there on a Bonneville, again, I know a lot of, you know, they've tried that before. A lot of people push back. But we need bypasses. Squim's the only city that actually put in a bypass. And now they're talking about putting in more roundabouts. And boy, I see a lot of tourists not wanting to make that trip, especially out to Forks. They'd probably be lucky to have some car wash tokens left after they made it through all the retail sales and sales tax spots. And you got to stand up to the sales tax Gollum. While the communities, they are that. They want that sales tax dollar, and they want to slow down as many people as they can and run them through their opportunity to collect the sales tax. And we suffer from that because we don't get as much as we could from May until September. And then in the winter, nobody comes. And then, you know, and, you know, I'm not afraid to take on Olympic Park associates. I already have. I'm not afraid to get butchered in the paper from an opinion by somebody that says, we can't do that. Well, what's your alternative? Limiting our financial ability and our ability to create jobs off of tourism?
Thank you. So since we're having issues with the timer, periodically, I'll let you let you know how much time's left. So right now, we have 24 and a half minutes.
Thanks, Brandon. Thank you, Mr. Worthington. How do you provide guidance and foster creativity and welcome opposing viewpoints with open dialogue?
Well, we got social media now. Typically, the for and against kind of shows itself. And you have to be honest. And the people that are on your side, if they recognize a winning argument, it's easy to get people to go along with you. to go along with you, and then you just hope that the other side is honest and acknowledges when you've got a winning argument, and it's hard, you've got money coming in and buying policy or overwhelming grassroots, and it can be tough. So it's not a, it's not always a love fest, but you don't gang stalk, and you don't cuss and scream, but you find your points and you make them, and hopefully, the other side's willing to recognize that, and you, a winning argument, you accept the winning argument, you change your position, you modify your position if you have to, but it's tough. I've been doing activism since 2008, and it's, it's, it's not for the timid, it's not for the offended, and sometimes it can get brutal for passionate, you know, but a lot of times, most of the time, that passion that comes from that brings you the answer. So you can't deflect all the passion, you got to hear some of the passion, you just got to think about it, maybe accept it, or try to come up with the, okay, I see that, but there's this. Got to try to work with them, but let your passion come out.
John, what legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? How would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with the legislators?
Oh, 2008, ramp metering and commercial drivers were affected by it, medical marijuana, I shifted my left leg to death from all that, so I was a medical marijuana advocate. It was a plant limit, and drug task forces didn't like what I was saying, and so, and now the climate commitment, all the way to pass forward to the Climate Commitment Act, and I've just been Olympias since 2008. There's always seemed to be some passion on public policy that I get my two minutes worth, maybe three, sometimes one, sometimes going down there and being in person till COVID hit, then I started doing stuff online. So I'm not like Benjamin Franklin going to France where everybody's going to love me. There's a lot of people there that don't like me because of the positions I've taken, but they can't deny my passion about it and my effort, and I'm proud of my advocacy. Didn't make a lot of money during that time period, I probably should have, but it was more what was important for me, I guess, at that time, at that time.
All right, next question. Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relevant to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
I'm from Port Angeles, I was, played baseball, I got on the bus, went all over. My uniform didn't fit very well. I got off the bus, and Port Angeles sucks, and we got to ride back on Chicken Coop Road if we won. We rode back on Chicken Coop Road a lot more than we didn't, and I'm, a lot of people probably won't talk about me affectionately, but they will probably talk about me, some of the things that I've done for the, in the, in the baseball games that I've played. I have regional pride, that happened there, and then, when people say Port Angeles sucks, and you get your regional pride, and it extends to Squim. A lot of the Squim guys that I played against, Donnie Markley and Clark and Murillo, we became friends later, and then the older guys, Lehman and Shay and Walpert, Phil Walpert, I played on a lot of softball teams with a lot of those guys. So there's some interconnect with Squim. My dad talked long John Gilbert into taking a chainsaw to the side of his house and building a barbecue on Gilbert Road right there in 1972. So I go back a ways, and I left and went to Pugetropolis and came back, and I'm glad I did.
Mr. Worthington, based on your, what you know about this position, what skills and qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
I think you've got to understand the legal part of it. Part of the activism and what made me so successful on the activism was transferring from the loud mouth at the speaker and passionate speaker to putting things down in legal form. I challenged the ban, the Kent versus Cannabis Action Coalition, couldn't get Normal to represent the coalition, couldn't get a lawyer, so we had, I had to do it, I had to help them do it, and I learned how to do legal right then and there, and I've been doing it ever since. So you have to be able to put out authority, you have to, you have to try to lean on some kind of authority for the policy position that you have, and in doing that, the APA is, was, is the best part about America, and I know all about the APA, that's the Administrative Procedure Act, I've done many of those myself, and I think that, I know you've got a lawyer probably somewhere, but it's nice to have somebody who's on the legal end and the passionate policy end.
Thank you.
Just adds up, there is 16 and a half minutes left.
Great, thank you, Brandon, thank you, Vicky, thank you for your comments thus far, John. Question number seven, strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
Sense of humor. I made partners with a lot of people, the AAA lobbyists, I said we should call them WAIT instead of weight, W E I G H T, boy, they thought that was funny. The Cannabis Action Coalition folks, they're still my friends, we're still friends on Facebook, and I keep in touch with them. The commercial drivers, a lot that I've met over the years, I'm still friends with a lot of them. I think that being able to rally people around the talking points and being able to help them focus and try to get them to laugh and make them think was the best results I've had. When you get too personal, or you, you don't show, the word I'm looking for, you don't show that you care enough about their position to bring it to them, bring, but your comeback to them in a more humorous manner, you get farther, you just do, and then people look to you again because they want to get that laughing view of it. They're not afraid to come to you because they know that you're not going to tear them up. That's for the other side, the people that oppose you, but you're, the people that are with you, you got to be that guy that they can come to and say, "Hey, what about this? Hey, what about that?" And I'm really, I'm pretty good at that.
Okay, great, we're going to go back to Brandon for question number eight.
All right, what issues do you think our city is facing right now?
When you sent me my questionnaire, boy, I hammered that thing, I put a bunch of stuff on there, and it's tough to pick out one, when obviously, if you've read my thing, I've got a bunch of stuff on my mind that I've highlighted for the public, that's lane mile and nautical mile taxes on the shipping. These guys don't pay anything. The shipping don't pay, doesn't pay, they don't end up on the emissions pie chart, which they should, and you've got to start getting some revenue from May and September on the tourism. You got to approach the park and get them to increase their sanitation ability, you got to bring back the firefighting that was probably a job I would have probably had and not gone off to Pugetropolis. So the natural thing, I don't believe in it. I think it was a cop-out, they should have kept those forest management jobs, the medical marijuana money or the recreational marijuana money, it should be ours, the people voted for it to go to local law enforcement for property crime enforcement. They got Olympia, and they changed the law, and that's not what the people voted for, and we need that money now, especially now, and it's tough. They had a bill this year, and they wouldn't even give it a hearing because the Liquor Board, they want that money, and, but now, we need that money, and I'm not afraid to ask for it, and there's, fortunately for the city of Squim, there are sponsors of that bill, and if we got together with some of the other cities, you could probably get that passed and bring money in sooner than you think. A lot of people, a lot of cities, and a lot of voters were like, "Hey, wait a minute, we were supposed to stop marijuana enforcement and spend that money elsewhere, and now we're still spending it on marijuana enforcement, albeit at the Liquor Board," but that was kind of a bait and switch there. So, yeah, I got lots of that, and it should be there on my controversial sum of it, sure, but that's revenue that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you. How do you ensure that your decisions align with organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision that you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
It's hard to say that I was not on the front line of recreational marijuana by putting myself out there and taking the hits that I did on medical and furthering the paradigm, of that paradigm, it led to recreational, and took a beating on the medical, but it put it four in a forefront, and people started to think about it more, and they said, "Well, no, we don't want to do that anymore." And so I think that that's my achievement, as I limped back to Squim from Pugetropolis, I accomplished things, and those were one of the things I thought that I helped accomplish, was furthering the recreational law. Portland didn't do it right, they do the exemption to the crime thing, and that just keeps filling the criminal justice hopper, and so I, I can't promise that, you know, law enforcement's not going to like me all the time, especially the Drug Task Force guys, but the beat guy, you know, I'm all about the beat cop, that's, that's where the money was supposed to go in the first place, was to those guys. The Drug Task Force guys, we've seized a lot of property, and the county does well, but the drug houses stay open for years sometimes, and there's a lot of collateral damage just to get that seizure, and I'm not afraid to step up and say so, and I have, a lot.
Nine minutes.
Oh, nine? John, do you have any questions for us?
I do. I do. I just went through a pretty intense debate, and it's still ongoing at the Clallam County Commissioners' hearings, and I've got some photos banned, and it's photos like these, and if you're in a position where, I'll just ask you guys, do you think that the emissions from all these ships in the Pacific Ocean should be on this pie chart before the Climate Commitment Act makes decisions? Do you think that? I mean, should we make decisions on the Climate Commitment Act on this pie chart, which does not include the shipping emissions? How do you make decisions on the climate and the emissions without your biggest emitter? And here's the picture that I got banned from, and this is a picture of when the ICAI came to America, when the N O D C started, this is the shipping, that's a huge increase, it's a massive amount of emissions. You can do enough open trails and open spaces, and you're still not going to, you're still breathing all of those emissions, so how do you develop your environmental policy without having an accurate pie chart?
There were a lot of questions in that question. So could you state, what question would you like us to answer?
Do you think shipping emissions belongs in the emissions pie chart? Right now, they're not.
I'd have to say I don't know enough about it to have a yes or no.
I don't blame you, because when they start banning pictures of it all, and no one, that shows that no one really wants to look at it. So open space is great, trails are great, but when you, when your farming is coming from 1,500 miles away or 6,000 miles away, if you're getting onions from Malaysia or apples from Malaysia, that's a carbon footprint, and it should go here, it should be here. It shouldn't be just our stuff, local stuff, regional stuff. I think what it's done is, it's enabled the world economy to pollute for free, that's what I think, and I don't think it's fair for me, a low-income guy, to pay a massive gas tax and let these guys not pay anything. I wouldn't have probably even signed up to be, try to get on, if this wasn't presented to me like that, I probably would just get my paralegal license and try to earn money, try to do something else, but it's those kind of things right there, when not having an explanation, you're forgiven because, because you're not, you at least listened to me. Most people at the legislature this year, they, they didn't even let me testify on four bills related to that, so that tells me a lot, that tells me that I'm right, that there is something wrong, we're not, Beth Doglio said, "We can't let everybody pollute for free," these people are polluting for free.
So there's only a couple more minutes left, so if there's any other questions that you would like to ask about the position before, I've got a few more minutes here.
I'm ready for the next one, if.
That's all of our questions, so if you had any other questions regarding that position, so.
Do you have any more questions for us? What's two minutes left?
Four and a half, so.
Four and a half minutes left, if you would like to ask us about the position, or?
I, I, I think that I've covered everything. I would like to know how you feel about Complete Streets, considering that you have a bypass, and people get by you pretty quick, and then up the road, you're going to have 30 mile an hour roundabouts with trucks on them. We probably get 80% of our stuff from a truck, and we don't have really a freight corridor, I mean, that's our freight corridor, the extent of the freight corridors right out here, it ain't much of it, but you're probably going to get one at the Squim Bay Lodge, you're probably going to get one at Gilbert, you're going to get one, and then they're, you know, they didn't get a good reception in Port Angeles, but are you willing to stand up for Forks and the coast? for Forks and the coast and say, "You know what? We need to get people out there with more than just car wash tokens. We, we need to make sure that we get equal distribution of the tourism dollar."
As city councilors, we only concern our thing, ourselves with what happens within city limits. We have no control over what happens at the Squim Bay Lodge or the roundabout at Simdar's Road Extension or anything like that. We can voice opinions to the legislators if somebody comes to us after we, after we researched the facts. We can voice opinions as individuals, but we only concern ourselves over what happens within the city limits of Squim.
Would you be willing to write Candace Bach or somebody at the A W C and say, "Hey, we're kind of getting the short end of the retail sales and sales tax stick here."
I'd have to research it and if we are getting the short end of the resale tax, I would sure write a letter to her. But first I have to research it to see if the city of Squim is getting the short end of the sales tax. Does that make sense?
That's fair.
Okay.
And I'd just like to add, you know, I've lived here all my life. Before we had a bypass, my parents had a grocery store on the corner of Fifth and Washington, Tom Tom Grocery. And, you know, I've seen cars backed up through here, but I think tourism is important, you know, getting the trucks through, but also the people that live in the city already are important. So we really have to make sure we're making decisions in the city and working with our legislators that we're also thinking about the people who are already here. You talked about your family visiting and getting stuck in traffic. So I think all of that plays a part. And so sometimes it's not a black and white answer. Sometimes there's a lot of gray in what you, what we need to do.
It does and if a freight corridor isn't there and it, it'd be easier to make a decision like that from a commercial trucking position because they're the ones that kind of drive it. So thank you. You guys have been great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. So last on the agenda is we're going to have an executive session. So the city council will now meet in a closed executive session for a period of 30 minutes until 6:30 PM pursuant to R C W 42 dot point zero three zero point one one oh one B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. The city council is expected to take final action in a public council meeting immediately following the executive session scheduled to begin at 6:30. So we are in recess till then. Okay, the Squim City Council needs to extend our executive session for an additional 15 minutes. So we will be in executive session until 6:43? Okay, we are back from executive session. Is there a motion to be made?
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to finalize negotiations, which may include signing a purchase and sale agreement for property acquisition for a future park not to exceed the amounts discussed in the executive session, plus any additional usual and customary closing costs.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is harmony with us first off?
I am here.
Okay. All right. Is there any objections to the motion? Okay, seeing that motion passes.
And I also move to authorize the city manager to use any combination of rainy day ARPA and impact fee funds to fill any funding shortfalls for the park land purchase.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion from council? And will the city court please take a roll call vote?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe? Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Janice?
Yes.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Motion passed six zero.
All right. That concludes that. Is there anything further from council? Otherwise, if there's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Our next meeting will be next Monday, starting at five o'clock for, for executive session.
Really quick, I'm so sorry. Are, is the meeting already over?
No, we did not vote to adjourn yet. No, we didn't.
Very briefly, I just wanted to state for the record that I went to the, to an event last week called the People's Forum to observe the event and to listen and learn about the perspectives of others in the community. And I felt that it was an interesting time there. And I would, I think that it's important for there to be civil civic discourse in our community. My only two senses that at times the meeting, that, that people, the People's Forum at times was not civil and it was just, it was, like I said, it was an opportunity to learn and to listen about the perspectives of others in the community. So that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Is there any objections to the motion to adjourn?
No.
Not at this time.
All right.
Let's go.
Next one, the F5.